Hello, good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. This is the regularly scheduled meeting in the Sandwich Board of Appeals. Please stand for the plate.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Appeals is comprised of five regular members and one alternate member. The Board of Appeals can have up to four alternate members. Any decision of this board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of five is four. If four members vote, the vote would have to be unanimous. If five members vote, one member could dissent. This meeting is live and streamed on Sandwich Community Television's website and on local Channel Nine. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the SCTV website at www.sandwichtv.org tomorrow. And we're to ask if anyone else besides this young lady is recording this meeting. Please let me know. I see none. No flag. All right, just a note to the audience. Just based on some time constraints and where we have to go this evening. The special permits for number twenty-five dash zero five ninety-eight Town Neck Road, the one for twenty-five dash zero six thirty-nine and forty-one Wood Avenue, and the one for twenty-five dash oh seven three thirty-one Phillips Road. We're going to open those tonight, and then we're going to continue them until the next meeting on June tenth, just because of timing. So if you're here for that, you're really not going to hear anything tonight because all we're going to do is open it and continue it. Okay? All right. Can I get a move or a move to approve the minutes of January twenty-eighth and March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So like I said, we're just going to start with the new business. We're going to open them and continue them until June tenth. First one is twenty-five dash zero five ninety-eight Town Neck Road. The Sandwich Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on the application of Dylan Thomas, applicant in Land Row Realty LLC, property owner, for a special permit under sections thirteen thirty and twenty-four twenty of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw for property located at ninety-eight Town Neck Road, Sandwich, Mass. Mass Assessor's Map number ninety-three, parcel number thirteen, for the purpose of intensifying a non-conforming front yard setback. The public hearing will be held on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five at the Sandhills Community Center, sixteen Dewey Ave., Sandwich, Mass. at six o'clock. The public record information can be viewed at the Planning and Development Office. We do have a couple of comment letters. The Engineering Department, it's from Sam Jensen. The Engineering Department has reviewed the subject request and offers the following for the board's consideration. The generation, generator location restricts the depth of two perpendicular parking spaces on Freeman Ave. Large vehicles in these spaces may encroach onto Freeman Ave, travel lanes, and negatively affect traffic and pedestrian safety. It is recommended that these and other depth restricted spaces on Freeman Ave be restricted to compact vehicles only. Please contact the Engineering Department with any questions or guidance. Board of Health, the applicant must ensure and demonstrate that no components of the subject system will be blocked or impacted, from Heather Galant. From Andrew Mandell in the Fire Department, the Fire Department would request that bollards be placed to the left side of the generator for protection of pipes that run along the ground to the building as well as the exposed gas meter. In the attached photo, you can see this area is used for vehicle parking and poses a safety risk. That ends the public comments. Can I have a motion to continue this?
Well, we have motion open.
Motion open, I'm sorry.
Yeah, a motion open, public hearing for application twenty-five oh five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move we continue to June tenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. The Sandwich Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on the application of the Gatesman Family Trust, Andrew J. and Christine R. Gatesman, trustees, applicants and property owners for a special permit under sections thirteen thirty, twenty-four twenty, and twenty-six hundred C of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw for property located at thirty-nine and forty-one Wood Avenue, Sandwich, Mass. Assessor's Map number eighty-eight, parcel number one eighty-nine and one ninety, for the purpose of demolition construction on a new dwelling. The public hearing will be held on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five at the Sandhill School Community Center, sixteen Dewey Ave., Sandwich, Mass. at six o'clock. The public information can be viewed at the Planning and Development Office. Okay. Public comments. Our first public comment is from Sam Jensen, Town Engineer. The Engineering Department has reviewed the subject request and offers the following for the board's consideration. The site is upslope of stormwater treatment facilities that help protect water quality for shell fishing and swimming in nearby waters. These stormwater treatment facilities are vulnerable to clogging and degradation by silt and sediment that can flow from inadequately controlled construction sites. The proposed site plans call for erosion in the sedimentation controls that if implemented and maintained properly should minimize off-site impacts. It is recommended that any approval of the subject be conditioned to require implementation of the proposed erosion and sedimentation controls and proper management of these until final site stabilization is achieved. In addition, to the controls identified on the proposed plan, a temporary stone construction interest may also be required to protect the street pavement and reduce sediment tracking from construction vehicles. The proposed site plan includes an onsite stormwater leach pits and other features that in concept would be expected to reduce site runoff if constructed and managed properly. Calculations were not found in the submitted serial receipt, and the sizing of these components have not been reviewed. A paved driveway apron within the street layout is required by the town's driveway regulations. It is understood that this pavement should not affect the large coverage calculation as it would be located on the town layout of Good Avenue and not on the subject block. Okay. Board of Health from Heather Galant. Approved septic system application design for four bedrooms on file. Building plans for homes cannot exceed four bedrooms per Title V and approved design plans. Andrew Mandell, the Fire Department. The Fire Department has no comment at this time. Okay. And that's it for that one. Can I get a?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing on application twenty-five oh six.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to continue?
A motion to continue public hearing to June tenth.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Sandwich Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on the application of Peter B. and Janice H. Saul, trustees of the Saul Family Realty Trust, applicants and property owners for a special permit under sections thirteen thirty, twenty-four twenty, forty-two thirty, and forty-three fifty slash two of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw for property located at three thirty-one Phillips Road, Sagamore Beach, Mass Assessor's Map number ninety-five, parcel number twenty-five, for the purpose of demolition and construction of a new dwelling in the floodplain. The public hearing will be held on May twenty-seventh at the Sandhill School Community Center, sixteen Dewey Ave., Sandwich, Mass. at six o'clock. Public record information will be viewed at the Planning and Development Office. Okay, public comments. The Engineering Department, Sam Jensen, has no comment at this time. Heather Galant from the Director of Public Health. This memorandum provides the Health Department's comments regarding a special permit application for the property located at three thirty-one Phillips Road, Sandwich, Mass. The proposed plan submitted under request for comment number twenty-five dash oh seven indicated increase in the facility design flow. The increase in the facility's design flow is prohibited under the State Environment Code, Title V, three-ten CMR, fifteen point two-one-four-two A of the Sandwich Board of Health Regulation, Coastal Beaches, Dunes, Banks, and Barrier Beach Regulation. For residential dwellings, the Title V determines the facility's design flow based on the number of bedrooms. According to the Health Department records in Sheet A dash zero zero one, estimated habitable space comparison. The existing structure is a three-bedroom dwelling, which corresponds to a design flow of three hundred and thirty gallons per day. In accordance with the above cited state and local regulations, the property is restricted to the existing number of bedrooms, and no increase in design flow may be permitted. Additionally, the Health Department will require a deed restriction limiting the property to three bedrooms as a condition of any building permit associated with the demolition and reconstruction of the dwelling. From Andrew Mandell, the Fire Department has no comment at this time. From Dave DiCanto, from the Department of Natural Resources. Conservation Commission has reviewed the request for special permit number twenty-five dash oh seven, three thirty-one Phillips Road, Sagamore Beach, Mass. Commission reviewed the applicant's project and issued an order of conditions effective three six twenty-five, permit number S E six six dash two zero four one, in compliance with the Mass Wetlands Protection Act and the Town of Sandwich Wetland Bylaws. A copy of the order is attached to this memo. The Commission does not have any comments regarding a special permit request other than the applicant must comply with the order of conditions. All right, and that's it for comment letters.
I'll motion open, public hearing for application twenty-five oh seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll motion to continue, public hearing for twenty-five oh seven to June tenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. We're going to go backwards, and we're going to go to whole business. Number twenty-five dash oh four zero, Pocasset and Zero Chom Road, Special Permit Amendment for the Adventure Park at Heritage Museums and Gardens LLC, continued. We have one comment letter. This is a continuation, it is already open. No, okay. The Sandwich Fire Department has no comment at this time. Brendan Brights, the former Building Commissioner. The application is proposing a minor change to facilitate a practice area. This will not change the total occupancy of the course. A building permit will be required for the construction of the practice apparatus. That's it for that. Okay. Mr. Crane's going to be recusing himself from this permit. Building Commissioner Ian Reed is unavailable, we will notice. And again, this special permit is for the purpose of adding two practice lines to the briefing area of the existing rope course. As I noted, this is already open, so we're just continuing. Over to the comment letters. Steve Leanne, you have any comments on it?
Not really, it's a pretty simple and straightforward request. The applicant already has a special permit for the operation of the ropes course at Heritage. This would be to add two practice briefing lines. It was notated on the plan that the board previously approved, but the structures themselves were not shown on the plan. So it was a toss-up as to whether or not they needed to seek relief through the board. We felt it safer that they get the amendment to show onsite plan of the actual two structures and not just delineation saying practice area.
Okay. The applicant? Good evening, Ms. Putney or Scott Putney? Yours?
Oh, thank you. My name's Anne Scott Putney. I'm the President and CEO at Heritage Museums and Gardens, and I'm here to represent the Adventure Park at Heritage. As Leanne said, this is a very straightforward request to amend our current special permit. What we're providing to you is just sort of filling in the space that's already noted on there. The existing brief area was approved as part of the special permit, but this just states that we are going to be putting in two briefing practice lines to the existing ropes course. It's not a, it's not enlarging the ropes course. It's simply a place where people can practice before they actually start their climbs.
Okay. Anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant?
No.
This is going to be, it's going to be open to the air, it's not going to be enclosed?
That's correct. It's afterwards.
Any other questions from the board?
None.
All right, I'm going to open it up to questions from the public, but I would ask that anybody be as civil and concise as possible with your comments. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this? I see none. Okay. Have a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One deliberate now, so we put this. And we don't have to come back to it after.
Sure.
I'd be willing to, yeah.
All right. Jenny? Mark?
Okay. Procedural history, March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Special Permit Amendment application was filed under sections thirteen thirty for the purpose of adding two practice lines in existing rope course, to the existing rope course, unassociated, properties located at zero Pocasset Road in Zero Chom Road, as shown in Assessor's Map thirty-seven, parcel one and two. The public hearing was open on April twenty-second and closed on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. The application was accompanied by a plan dated December twenty-twenty-four and further revised June twenty-oneteen and entitled Zoning Board of Appeals Permitting Plan, zero Pocasset Street, zero Chom Road Rope Course redesign. It is prepared for Heritage Museum and Gardens, sixty-seven, Mass. The board reviewed the application and all of the materials submitted prior to the close of the public hearing. Board received and gave due consideration to the testimony. Given as public hearing, following members attended, Nevin, Terry O, Killian, Mann, Busker, and Foley. The findings. Now, the Board of Appeals finds that the application meets requirements of Section nine, Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight, subject property lies within the R one zoning district. Subject property consists of approximately thirty-four acres. Property, do you have this in paper? It keeps dropping out. Do you have a hard copy?
I do not. You can use it online if you like. Can I show it up on screen?
Subject property lies in the R one zoning district. Subject property consists of approximately thirty-four acres, I got that. Heritage Museum and Gardens is a nonprofit organization. The ropes course received special permit approval in June twenty-nineteen. The applicant is applying for a special permit for amendment to petition nineteen oh four to include two practice lines in the briefing area. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings with respect to section thirteen thirty requirements. The board does not find that there are conditions peculiar to this case, but not generally true for similar permitted uses on other sites in the same district. The board finds that nuisance hazard or congestion will not be created. The board finds that there will, the intent, there will not be substantial harm to the neighborhood. The board finds that there is no derogation from the intent of the bylaw such that the district's objectives will be satisfied. Anything additional? Then I will move the findings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the conditions of the public hearing, the Zoning Board of Appeals consider potential conditions of approval of the special permit. The zoning Board of Appeals voted. The following conditions of approval shall be imposed upon any special permit approval, and that these conditions are reasonable, and that the applicant and its successor in interest shall be bound by these conditions. Failure to comply with all the conditions set forth in the decision shall terminate the grant of the special permit pursuant to the requirements of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw, section thirteen thirty, the grant. The special permit shall expire upon transfer of ownership prior to initiation of substantial construction on or occupancy of the site, unless such transfer is authorized in this permit or no substantial construction. Or occupancy takes place within three years of the special permit approval, excluding such time required to pursue or await the determination of appeal referred to in Mass General Law Chapter forty-eight, section seventeen. Special permit shall not take effect until it's recorded at the Barnsville County Registry of Deeds, and a copy of the recorded special permit is provided to the planning office. Any change, extension, or alteration may not be implemented without prior approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals. All conditions set forth in petition nineteen oh four are still in effect. Any further conditions? I will move them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, after reviewing the application, the plan, and all of the materials submitted after giving due consideration to testimony given at the public hearing, the board hereby approves a special permit amendment under section thirteen thirty and forty-one fifty of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw for the purpose of adding two practice lines to the existing ropes course on the property located at zero Pocasset Road and zero Chom Road, as shown in Assessor's Map thirty-seven, parcel one and two. I move to approve the special permit in consideration of the findings of the Zoning Board of Appeals and subject to the conditions stated here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're good to go, Ms.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda is the continuation of special permit number twenty-four dash fifteen, Village Green Comprehensive Permit, MSG Village Green dash one LLC, continued. In regard to this special permit, we do have Amy Questle. Town Council is here in person tonight. Will Downey and Barrett from Ballack Plating Group is attending by Zoom. Sean Reardon is not able to attend, he's out of state. Again, the public hearing remains open. Eric, oh, he's already gone, okay. Eric has, he recused himself, so he's not going to be here. We are in receipt of public comment from Christine Dennis dated May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, which was included in the board's meeting packet. I'm going to ask, everyone's had a chance to read it and review it.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I'm going to, I'm receiving, oh, that's right, here is Susan. Public comment from Susan Dangle. Each of you has a letter and a copy of it in front of you, and I know you already. Okay, I'm going to defer to you now.
Sure, so at the last meeting, there were eight items that the board requested the applicant come back with. They're reading elevation of the proposed structures, showing the max height, an underground parking layout, landscaping plan that was certified by Landscape Architect, clarification on the four tasks. Each category of energy consumption needs to be certified by an electrical engineer. Their solar interconnection agreement, the solar connection one-line diagram, a plan showing all easements, and then a plan set conducive to the board's request to move amenities to the other side of the street. So to date, we did not receive anything from the applicant prior, but it looks like we may be receiving something tonight from the applicant.
Would you like that?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The applicant had believed, golly, almost a year ago that it had filed a complete application. And as recently as March, there were some changes made, and more papers were filed, but the applicant believed completed their presentation. As you know, last week, there were some items that came up and questions unresolved. Leanne had sent me a list of them a week ago, and the applicant has decided that we wanted to respond. I have here a thumb drive that has documentation responsive to the questions that Leanne wrote to me about. And if that could be.
I don't have a port.
You don't have a port for that?
I'm not on the surface.
I have some hard copies of some of the documents here. There is an alternate site plan that incorporates some of the things that had been requested last time. Let's get ready, Sophie. Okay. There is a copy of the architectural plans that nag in question that Kevin has brought up numerous times about the elevation. It's actually found on the plans. It has been there all along. I think it's thirty-nine feet. Kevin, but I, we have on this thumb drive in right here. It's thirty-nine feet, eight inches. Is the very top of the building. And we have another landscape plan and some responses to the electrical questions. Well, who knew? It's all there.
There we go.
All right, this would be the most, probably the most important part of the package, and I'm going to ask Paul Cleary to explain it. I will hold a second one.
Well, I thought if you can put it like wherever it was, and if anybody, you know, needs to see a closer view of it, they can probably take a look at it there. Yeah. So our understanding from both the April eighth meeting and then the last May thirteenth meeting is that the seventh building in this general area up towards Route one thirty and the playground equipment, and then the different amenities here in the, between the buildings. We have relocated playground, clubhouse, pool area here to this north side of the roadway, eliminated that seventh building here, pulled everything back, and then, you know, hopefully this is now, has more community garden, open space for the residents in the building. So that is kind of the layout that we thought we were hearing from the board. And that's our, you know, proposed alternative site layout that our three-twenty-four plans would evolve to this plan set, which I think addresses what I heard on the eighth anyways, and then what I was told by Joan on the, on the last meeting of the thirteenth.
Have you been given a chance to digest the materials you have from peer review, or is the intent of the applicant to not provide another extension at this moment?
Not to have any more extension, but in the, in the last comments from the peer review, this type of change can be handled with the final, the final plan, is his guidance in the peer review report.
Amy, could you comment as to where you think this stands at the moment? I mean, Attorney Fitch, I specifically said, try and get these, if you're going to do anything, please communicate with us that you are in fact going to, and not come in at the meeting with the updated information. We haven't even had a chance to look at this. And you said you will not do another continuation, so where do we stand?
You have, well, your counsel You, you have, well, your counsel will confirm it, but you have forty days to review it and reach a decision. It isn't as if it, you know, just thrown at you without any time to review. I'm sorry if I misunderstood your request last time. It took a while to get these things done at all, but we wanted to have them for you, knowing that you have, you still have time to review them and then reach a decision.
Okay. Amy, I have to defer to you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is extremely disappointing, because you were very clear at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Very clear that this needed to be before the board ahead of time. Even if you weren't clear, it's, it's very obvious that this board does their homework, that you all come prepared. I myself come prepared, so we would have, if we had this beforehand, we would have been able to ask questions, we would have been able to make suggestions. None of that can be done. And so honestly, I, I'm not even sure it's worth hearing what they have to say when we have these plans that we've never even seen before. If they want to close the hearing, they can close the hearing, and then it's up to us. So I, I do want to make it very clear, because Attorney Fitch claims that he might have misunderstood you at the last hearing, so I want to make it very, very clear that if the applicant chooses to close tonight, the applicant has zero say in anything. There can be no, there can be no conversation, there can be no clarification, there can be nothing. So for the next forty days, I will work with you on a decision, whether that, and then after we close, we can talk about what the decision would be. There's two options for you guys to decide, but there would be no more, there would be no input at all from...
Except for what we received tonight.
Exactly, yep. So whatever we receive tonight, we're going to have to sort through on our own, and either decide whether we have enough, if we have sufficient information to come to a, to a decision, or if we have sufficient, if we feel that we have sufficient information, we're going to have to come to a decision with significant conditions to create a project that this board is comfortable with.
Okay, I get it.
Another question?
Sure, no, please.
So with the conditions, is that something that would happen at another meeting, or would that happen during this board? How would that play out?
So we would have to schedule, we would schedule, the, the public hearing is closed, so there will be no, no input taken from others or the public, from the public or the applicant, and then we would meet and you would deliberate.
I see, okay.
Okay. Any member of the public like to comment or respond in any way? Yes, please, just tell us your name and your address, please.
Want me to stand up?
Sure.
So my name's Ethan Schapp, I've spoken before. I understand that this hearing may impact the close and that you have your forty days, but it's my understanding that you can approve it, you can disapprove it, or you can approve it with conditions. And I'm just here asking you to, if you're going to approve it, because I understand that Sandwich is dangerously low in its affordable housing commitment, so it may have to approve it. But certainly, you can approve it with conditions.
Right.
And I'm here asking you that if you approve it that way, put it, put in conditions protecting Peters Pond. I, if you don't mind, just, I sent you a letter. I'd like to read from that letter, just to remind the board, because I sent it a year ago, what my letter said. I'll be brief, I just have a few sentences in that letter, but I want to go over it with you. And it says, "In a deed recorded with Barnstable Registry of Deeds," and I give you the site, it's book two-four-two-seven-nine, page forty-nine, "in the applicant's chain of title, the grantor places restrictions on the waterfront portion of the land conveyed, namely, that no more than three single-family lots be developed, and that no rights of use, access, or other means of passage to Peters Pond be granted to any other third parties besides the owners of the three residential lots." That means is, the few, to impute that language, if you will, "the future occupants of the hundred and forty-four units to be built easily qualify as third parties to be barred from access to the pond, and the developer, by virtue of the development, will be implicitly and literally paving their way down to the pond in violation of its deed covenants, since the land is clear-cut all the way to the embankment, and there are two easily accessible paths down to the water. The pond will thus act as an attractive nuisance, and draw them in, no different from any other pool." What I'm saying to you is, not only can you impose conditions that this board sees fit, the deed into this developer paves the way for you, it gives you permission to protect Peters Pond, because the seller understood the risk to Peters Pond and said, "No third parties, absolutely no third parties besides those three waterfront lots can have any access to the pond." And here's what I'm worried about. If this board does nothing, I think someday you'll forget my name, but you'll remember that I was here, and one of you surely will say to the other one, "That guy was right," because with that amount of units, they're all going to roll down that hill. They will all roll down that hill, and that amount of usage, that amount of waterfront presence will destroy Peters Pond. It surely will. There should be enough to do in this development that keeps them way above the pond, and if there are no restrictions, Peters Pond will be in all kinds of trouble. There's just no doubt in my mind. There shouldn't be a doubt in any of your minds. So, in addition to your right to impose conditions, there's a deed that says, "Go ahead and do it." They have no choice but to obey the covenants in their title, and it's not subject to any interpretation. There are certain things that were subject to it that I'm not even mentioning, but this is not subject to it. This says that if they want to sell three individual lots, at most, I don't know, thirteen, fourteen people can have access to Peters Pond. But if you give all these rental units access to Peters Pond, we're done for, we're done, and it'll hurt, you know, a viable body of water, that luckily hasn't had too much bacteria and other things that stop us from enjoying it. So I'm begging you, if you find yourselves up against a brick wall, and your commitment to affordable housing is indeed low, and if you find yourselves having to approve this, please use your authority to impose some conditions to protect guys like me and other people who love this pond and respect it, who don't pollute it, and who swim in it and enjoy it every day. I thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you want to speak?
Yes. My name is Lynn Cormier, thirty-year resident in Forestale. And at one of these meetings back in March, I asked about the status of the microgrid feasibility study that had been financed back in twenty eighteen with a grant from the Massachusetts Clean Energy Technology Center to Steve Cleary and one of his many companies, Autonomous Energy Solutions. Someone from the Cleary group yelled slander, libel, and the question never was answered. So I did some research, and I made some phone calls to get the truth. One of the program coordinators for the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center told me the grant was rescinded in twenty eighteen because this microgrid project is not owned by the development group, and Steve Cleary was not an authorized principal. The seventy-five thousand dollars was subsequently awarded to the city of Worcester for electric buses. This is just one more example of how this group has misled us for the last sixteen years about their intent, their ownership, and everything else that's connected to it. One more example out of many.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to be fine. My name is Stephen Cleary, the thief, slanderer.
Please, 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 I'll ask you to leave. I'll ask you to leave if you can't be civil.
An eighty-five thousand dollar grant was awarded to Catalyze Acre, Pimlico Pond Microgrid. Do you know where eighty-five thousand dollars went? It went to an engineering firm based in California to review all of our engineering plans and review how a microgrid could work in Sandwich and Forestale. I did not get a one dime. Seventy-five thousand dollars wasn't redirected to Worcester. It went to an engineering company called Willdan. I can get your receipts.
Okay, that's fine. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to debate that. The person that I spoke to at the center was the program coordinator for this grant program that only ran for a couple of years, and he was very clear that that seventy-five thousand that had been set aside for the microgrid feasibility study was not, it was rescinded because this group does not own the project. A large company in Texas called Catalyze, I don't know how they're related, somehow they've joined forces on this, and the company that he mentioned in California is a contractor for Catalyze. And that's who the Mass Center for Clean Energy was doing business with, was Willdan, but it didn't work out. And I was told that that seventy-five thousand dollars actually did go to Worcester for the electric buses, and that Willdan agreed to that.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak to this? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Susan Dangle, I've been before you a couple of times. I live on Cootit Road in Mashpee, and I have served over the last four years as the president of Save Mashpee-Wakeby Pond Alliance, desperately trying to save our pond. As I understand that, that this hearing is likely to close tonight, I just wanted to come personally and urge you to deny the application. Many in Sandwich may not feel the impact of impaired water like we do in Mashpee, but imagine if it were Scorton Creek on the front page of the New York Times two years ago, January first, above the fold, highlighting the toxic stew facing Mashpee River, which now has muck that comes up to your waist if you fall in it. There's no oxygen, and all of the oysters that we planted to help remove nitrogen died. Stormwater and wastewater from Village Green will flow down gradient through Papanes Bay watershed, and if not properly managed, will continue to impair the waters in its path, ultimately reaching the Mashpee River. Those headwaters are at the base of Mashpee Pond. You should know that Mashpee already has dedicated nearly a hundred and fifty million dollars to install phases one and two of their sewer plan, with phase one of the sewer plan coming online in the next two weeks. Also, votes this may have set aside design funding for phase three, which will handle Wakeway Bay, as well as a wastewater solution on Pimlico Pond Road to stop the nutrient loading from existing septic systems on the north shore of Wakeby Pond. While no one disagrees with the urgent need for affordable housing on Cape Cod, building it in a way that threatens water resources simply cannot happen. The state of Massachusetts issued revised Title V regulations with strong TMDL requirements for all fifteen towns on Cape Cod. It's important to note that while 40B projects are exempt from any zoning regulations, they are not exempt from complying with state regulations. Further, the legal intermunicipal agreement between Sandwich, Mashpee, and Barnstable clearly spells out that new developments must add net zero nitrogen. This is especially critical at this location, as this part of Forestale is not even on Sandwich's plan for searing until phase three or beyond, which is decades. I don't understand how a solar array of this size is being considered as part of a 40B application. While laudable to provide eco-friendly power, at what cost? Down gradient is, is Pimlico Pond, which currently has a wonderful buffer of trees, actually some sixty acres, that are untouched, and native plants that are taking up nutrients in the groundwater. This land also has no wastewater discharge at this time. All of that will be gone with this particular plan that we've seen opening Pimlico Pond up to a significant degradation, as well as further degradation to Wakeby and Pond and beyond. Over the course of the application, I listed in a note to you all that you can, can read, and I won't read it all tonight, but there are numerous letters, numerous studies that have been provided to you that indicate issues concerning this wastewater plan, which by the way, if this is a new plan, I still don't see a wastewater plant design here, and I don't see how any of the, some two-hundred-and-twenty-nine kilograms of nitrogen that Scott Horsley predicted would become present if this was built as listed, are going to be mitigated to zero. So I agree with all of the comments that I outlined, and I sent that to you, Mr. Nevin, and I just don't understand. To date, this applicant has provided no meaningful data that provides clarity on this wastewater issue that would be expected for any other project in town anywhere to be approved. I urge you to deny the application.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak to this permit? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Chris Dennis, Epsom Drive, Sandwich Mass. I understand the board, you know, if this hearing closes, that you have basically three choices, which is to deny, approve, or approve with conditions. And I just want to ask of this board to really think about when you do, if you do approve with conditions, the what-ifs that could happen if the condition is started and not met. One of the very first things that this developer is going to have to do is clear twenty-three, actually add another ten for the apartments, thirty-three acres of land, okay? When that land is cleared, what happens if this developer cannot continue? We've got environmental issues, drainage issues, the poor people that are on Pimlico Pond Road that used to have a forest in their backyard now have everything completely cleared, and then the environmental issues that Scott Horsley talked about with the amount of nitrogen and everything that those trees are taking up right now. So I just am asking the board to consider the what-ifs with everything, if something is going to fall apart, because as it stands right now, this developer has taken it upon themselves to clear over nine acres. That's, that happened. We can't get those trees back, there's already nine acres gone. I don't know how that happened, I don't know how they got permission to do that. I'm just foreseeing what might happen in the future, and I'm really worried, so I just want you to really think about the what-ifs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public like to speak?
I, just to tag on to what Chris and this nice lady has said, we can't undo this. Once it's done, it's done, and we will live with it, and the catastrophe this will create for generations. Once our ponds are polluted, your kids, your grandkids, my kids, my grandkids, it's over. So I urge you to just consider that, please.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any, anybody on the board, or Amy, do you have any comments or any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Kevin, you're on.
You've eliminated a building, does that mean you've reduced the number of units?
No.
So how are you getting a hundred and forty-four units, you're putting them in, those six buildings?
I believe.
Yes, yeah. How's that being done?
Square foot of units. Units will change and be smaller.
So it's not, the, the building isn't getting any higher?
No, it's not going higher, no. The, the actual units still will be smaller.
Is that something that has to be approved by the state?
No, we have, the state requirement is the ten percent, three, three bedrooms.
But the state reviewed the project and granted its approval, right? Based on, you know, would they, I guess my question is, would they consider the modification of the sizes of the units a minor modification or something more than a minor modification?
That was the original filing, those six buildings, so that's what, that's what Mass Housing originally saw, were these buildings and those floor plans.
So how many units are in each building?
Still a hundred and forty-four units.
It's a hundred and forty-four, and...
We need to know exactly how many units are in each building.
Twenty-four units.
In each building?
Yeah. So that was the original, that was the original site layout with, that we sent to, to Mass Housing. Then with conversation with Ralph and Heather, they asked for the changes of buildings closer to Route one thirty, and two-story buildings transitioning from Route one thirty into the back of the property. So that's where the seventh building came from and the townhouses came from. This is in, this layout is coming back to try to, what I heard was building height, the thirty-five... the thirty-five-foot height of the underlining zoning, and most importantly, not to have all this parking in here to try to clean up the open space for the residents and have usable space for other people in those buildings, and then to put some of the amenity uses up or on the other side of the road. So that's, that's an alternative that, you know, we like. And, you know, we're trying to see the input ultimately, whether that's the...
With the, with that building was located, I mean, I see that the lot that was at the corner, so-called Lot Number Five doesn't exist anymore on that plan?
I'm sorry, Kevin, what?
There were two lots along Route 130. I only see one lot along Route 130.
There have always been four lots around, along 130, sixty-eight, which is that...
Okay, well, then...
Sixty-eight, then seventy, seventy-four, seventy-six, and then seventy-eight. So there were two. As far as tax bills go, there were four property addresses along, along Route 130.
Okay, so those, where that building came out, where the playground came out, is that going to be designated as open space?
This area could definitely stay, you know, in and around this property, that could definitely stay open space, yes.
What about above it?
What's that?
What about north of it?
Well, that's a, that's a buildable commercial lot.
Okay. But then, where was the original building? There was a building proposed somewhere...
That original building was somewhere right around here.
Right. Okay. So it was...
So there's a...
Now that that building is gone, will that area be designated open space?
This area, no. Seventy-four will not be open space, but we could have basically, you know, a line here and keep that open space.
And why can't the building, where the building was before, be designated open space?
I'm sorry?
Why cannot the area where the building was previously...
Oh, this area right here? Oh, yeah. Yeah, that can be open space. Yeah. I'm sorry. What that, what that line, I'm sorry, the line that is in here is trying to depict, Kevin, is there is an A and R from the planning board that recorded this lot and this lot. So there is a record. So now we're, we're reducing the size of, of this lot back to, you know, basically there.
The, I saw a letter that came in that I hadn't seen before that talked about the solar array and the fact that the state had turned this project down in the past based upon the solar array.
Yeah.
Did the state approve this project with the solar array? This one not?
This one not, yes.
So they reversed their possession?
Correct, yes. And with the reversal...
It was a Mass Housing partnership?
Mass Housing partnership was. So if we go back probably now about five years ago and talking with the comments that were first made, we initially put buildings on that area of land on Fifty-Nine Pimlico Pond, kind of overlooking the pond. And that was the Mass Housing partnership proposal. That was two-hundred-and-forty units of, of housing with the accessory uses. That project never got an eligibility letter from Mass Housing Partnership. We tried to simplify the project by using the BL-1 area that was kind of calling for more density, and we came in with this hundred-and-forty-four units here in the BL-1 district and included the ancillary and the accessory. When we filed this in June fourteenth of last year, immediately Ralph Fataco reached out to Mass Housing, and Mass Housing put in another letter saying that these are ancillary components to the housing and that they will be brought back in and reviewed by Mass Housing as we're moving to whatever next review they do.
I guess I'm confused if it, to a degree, if they initially said that the housing was ancillary and the focus seemed to be the solar.
Who said this?
It was in that letter. That was the impression I got from that letter.
Yeah, but again, that was, that was a request for an eligibility letter of Mass Housing. There's four different entities that handle eligibility letters. This is a New England Fund subsidy, and for a New England Fund subsidy, we're through Mass Housing. If, if, as we had suggested to the selectmen at some point in time to look at it as a lip, then you would go through that and through the old DHCD, but Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So there's different paths for an eligibility letter, and it's Mass Housing. And Mass Housing, Mass Development, and Mass Housing Partnership are all quasi-state agencies. They're not, they're not like Office of Housing and Livable Communities, an actual state agency. These are quasi-state agencies, and our eligibility letter came from Mass Housing.
And the letter, the denial letter, didn't come from Mass Housing?
No, it came from Mass Housing Partnership.
Mass Housing Partnership.
I would just point out that the site eligibility letter is required under the regulations regardless of who is the agency granting the letter. So this letter from Mass Housing Partnership does have merit to it, the denial letter.
The denial letter?
Yeah.
Because I'm confused how, on the one hand, they could say that the solar array was much larger than was necessary when, I think, more units were proposed.
Yep.
And now that doesn't seem to be the case. I can't quite figure that one out.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think I'm confused by that, quite frankly.
And your peer reviewer also thinks that the array is too large, so...
And the new plan that you've got there, one of the, one of the items that was brought up by the fire department the last time around was the ability to enter and exit from both sides of the building where there's parking underneath. Is that satisfied in the new plan?
That plan doesn't show the final component of it, but if you, if you look at here as you come in, this was designed as an entrance in and an exit out, which there are two, there are two ways in and out of that. But then it continues on, goes into all these buildings. So if this becomes an alternative, then we would add an exit here. Sorry, my phone's a little sick.
So that you're going to be able to travel through the parking lots of all the buildings?
Correct, yeah. Correct, yeah. And that was to try to, you know, open up more green and, and utilize some of the space for the buildings.
And fulfill the fire department requirements.
Correct, and that, yes, correct, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I guess, why doesn't the plan show that? It's what the fire department wants. Why would you ever not do what the fire department wants? So, again, we have this plan now with very, very faint pen drawings on it. I can't really, I can't see them from here. It just, it begs the question as to how are we ever going to come up with a decision on this?
Okay, and we just condition what Mr. Carrance stated?
I mean, we can try. It's going to be very, very difficult and perhaps result in a project that can't be built. I mean, this is, this is the risk that they're taking, is that they're asking myself, a lawyer who, you know, has trouble adding without a calculator, to engineer their project.
We are offering a Plan B. We're just offering a Plan B. Did try to meet Mr. Carrance. So we have Plan A that's all engineered. Now we're trying to meet what Mr. Carrance suggested is all. So it's either we go Plan A, or we try to get closer with the Plan B, and then we...
But Plan B is something that I would have, I would have to come up, we, this board has to, has to come up with during a decision.
Plan B is a much better plan, but we did bring up the comment, and the fire department brought up the comment in the last hearing, that there had to be an exit from both sides of the building, not just one side of the building.
And all the buildings, all the buildings are connected with a concrete vault, and all we have to do is extend that vault to make the exit on the other side.
So why doesn't the plan show it?
Because we may not be doing that. The three-twenty, the three-twenty, the three-twenty-four plan is the plan that's in front of...
If the fire department wants it, you're, you're going to have to do it. That's just common sense.
No, I...
What do you mean, you may not be doing it?
I can do it.
Are we working with this plan or are we working with another?
I want to work with this plan.
And that's a much better...
There's other ways that I can do the secondary exit, and I need input from both our fire people. And because you could come in this way, or I'm sorry, you could come in this way and go out this way, which is the way most of the buildings work, and do that six times on the building. This is a better plan, coming out this way, because there's less cuts. Here, you're going to end up with potentially curb cuts trying to get in. This, we spent a lot of time thinking about, is an entrance in and there's an exit out.
Right, but there has to be an exit on the other side of the building. An exit in and out on the same side of the building doesn't solve the problem. The exit has to be on the other side of the building. Each one of those buildings has to have an exit on either side, if I'm understanding the fire department's criteria.
Yep.
And that was available the last meeting. I'm just curious why it wasn't, it wasn't included. I mean, that plan is, is much closer to what we've talked about in the past. It's a far better plan than we've seen in the past, but I'm curious why you just didn't add, you know, that, the request of the fire department to that plan so we've got something we can act on without trying to come up with conditions on our own to make it, to make it work.
I don't, I, a condition that says there has to be two exits on the foundation is a condition that we could, you know, we could live with. That's not a, that's not a, that's not a, you know, a big condition.
But what's it going to look like, I guess my question is? What do you mean by a vault?
It's going to look like this.
What do you mean by a vault connecting these buildings?
It's going to look like that on this end here.
So there's going to be an opening on the right-hand side of each one of the, as I'm looking at it, there's going to be an opening on the right-hand side of each one of those buildings and the left-hand side of each one of those buildings?
No, you keep coming down here, and then that...
Underneath.
That would be replicated here.
Right.
And this would be replicated here.
Okay, so what are you going to do? You're going to pave completely between all those buildings? Or you're going to have a driveway that goes through to accommodate that traffic and then landscape?
That'll be underground with landscape all over.
We don't have truck turning radiuses from that. We, we won't have a truck turning plan for that, for the fire department then. So we don't know if the fire department, for example, can leave that top, the top three, I'll call them, if the fire department can leave the top three and, and take a right. We have no idea, because they haven't been able to, the fire department won't be able to see this and comment on it.
But if, if we close tonight, we can't even accept the fire department's recommendations upon seeing this plan, is that correct?
Well, the fire department, most likely, I, from looking at this, the fire department's going to tell you that they're not going to be able to make that right hand, that right-hand turn. And so then they're going to have to come back for a modification.
Which, this, this area here, there's been no change in this area. The fire department has this area.
That's not what I'm talking about. So the new, the new access that they're asking us to condition, design and condition all call, I don't know how the fire department's going to come out of that building and take a right. It doesn't look to me like, see how the, see how the lane gets narrow?
The fire department will never go into that building. The fire department will drive down this community space and fight the fire, or they'll fight a fire.
That isn't true if there's a fire.
There's not enough, there's not enough room underneath for a fire truck to go under.
We need to make sure of that. I mean, this is just, this is, I've been doing this a very long time, and I guess I've never seen anything like this.
The fire department must have felt that they were comfortable with the parking underneath, though, right?
They were, although I do question about the elevations, because we didn't necessarily have elevations. It was something that I have on my list, and I'm not certain if Sean had looked at that, but we can, that is something we can ask Sean about, too.
Great. Maybe, there's no further questions from the board? I think we probably don't have any other avenue right now except to close the public hearing and move on.
Yeah, there's a full flash drive of documents that we haven't seen.
Right, right.
Sure. Last comment before you close the hearing?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, sorry. Don Clay, Park Road. I've been listening to all these meetings as we've gone along, attended a few, and what I keep hearing week after week is, trust me, the wastewater management, trust me, you know, the, the building design, trust me. Six years ago, they, they went clear cut over ten acres in there without any EPA approval, any documentation, under the guise of putting in water or sewage or something to the road, never went in there, no stormwater management. If you walk that property, everything's running down into the woods, the dirt has just run away, down to Pimlico Pond, down to Peters Pond. Trust me, you know? My parents brought me up to, to say, if somebody tells you who they are, believe them. And I think they told you who they are by these inadequate plans and the falsities that they've shown me all the way through this whole process. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you very much. I think I'll ask for a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all very much. Right, now we just have to discuss. Amy, I have to give you a homework assignment, and you know exactly what it is.
Yes, can I get a copy of one of his plans that we just got?
Yes.
Yeah, if I could. It's so better.
Thank you, good time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
With electric cars, we have to be careful.
All right, gentlemen and ladies. All right, we have no other new business, no other old business, no more discussion. I get a motion to adjourn.
So when are you meeting next, are you?
We're meeting next on June tenth.
Did you want me, did you want to do this then?
We have, what, we have three permits that...
Five.
Five?
Oh, we have three, and then you have...
We're going to have five, five permits that...
So the next will be six twenty-four.
How about the twenty-fourth of June?
Yes.
Buckle up.
Yeah, they were dated, they're dated January.
Forty days, but that takes...
Tonight, we have to make a decision.
Yeah, what is, what date is that?
Day and raise. Probably early July.
The conversation aside, please. And I think he's...
Thank you.
And so we can, we can reach out and find out... Separate or straight through? So the twenty, the twenty-fourth is what we're going to look at? Okay, so that would be, today is the twenty-seventh, so that would be June twenty-six would be thirty, so twenty-six plus ten is July sixth. July sixth, thank you. Okay, that's fine. It's within the forty days.
And when are we meeting to deliberate on all this?
June twenty-fourth.
June twenty-fourth. Okay, I think we've covered all the bases for tonight. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Amy, very much for making the trip.
Yes, I will see you in a month.
Thank you, okay. Thank you very much for coming.
I live on the South Shore. I live in the marsh here. I do, I do most of the Cape for KP. It's such an easy... It's so nice.